We'll call the meeting to order. We will rise on the pledge of allegiance.
Let the allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Sue, if you could please call in.
Councilmember Canfield.
Here.
Councilmember Hedges.
Here.
Councilmember Phillips.
Here.
Councilmember Telemann.
Here.
And Mayor DeGore.
I'm here. I will look for a motion to approve the consent agenda with the updated accounts payable that were distributed to us.
And I'll be abstaining from that since I'm on the accounts.
I make that motion and we pass the consent agenda with the new information.
I'll sign it.
Discussion on it, Sue.
Councilmember Canfield abstained. Mayor DeGore.
Yes.
Councilmember Hedges.
Yes.
Councilmember Phillips.
Yes.
And Councilmember Telemann.
Yes.
Very good. Citizen comments, right on the agenda.
Jeff Dickerman, 429 High Street, one of the co-founders of Forward Lowell. And I just want to say that our organization and many in the community fully support Chief Bucula. Regardless of charges, we hope that he chooses to stay on as our chief. Thank you.
Thank you. Nothing under old business, only about the new business. Item A, Brian Newhoff, Broadway Parking Lot.
Okay, thank you, Council again, Brian Villam from Brian Newhoff. Appreciate your time this evening. As we move forward with the bond projects that were proposed, and hopefully you've had a chance to read the letter that was presented. And really, in the original bond proposal that was decided by my council, there were several projects included in that bond proposal. The two that have been recently finished, or three I should say, are the main lift station and the trunk sewer leading down to the wastewater plant. That's all operational and working, as well as the Valley Vista Lift Station that's operational, so we're moving in there. Then, in addition, a part of that project was to include sanitary sewer that would run down Broadway Street, as well as new water main, in essence, from Main down to Bowes. And as part of that, we were looking at how we want to put back the road. We've been having quite a few discussions with the staff and with King Milling, looking at how their trucks are operating. The idea is, do we want to put things back exactly as they are, or is there an opportunity to maybe change things and make some improvements there? In talking with King Milling and looking at how the intersection works and how Broadway works, there's really a lot of truck traffic, as you guys know. They usually back their trucks into the two spots where their loading bays. In essence, that area of Broadway there, just north of the tracks, becomes basically a truck turning and loading area. It's really not that great to have passenger vehicles come through there. Given their configuration and their space limitations, that's really hard for them to change. You know, their buildings are stuck where their buildings are stuck, and their internal processes and mechanics are all geared towards delivering at those two truck bays. So, really trying to find another option for them for loading those trucks is very, very limited. So then we started looking at what could we do to change the configuration of Broadway Street to maybe help that situation. And once we started looking at how the trucks were functioning there and their turning movements, how the parking lot that was there was functioning, and how passenger vehicles moved through there, we really said, well, let's think outside the box a minute. And what would happen if we really dedicated that area in front of their loading area to allowing truck turning movements? And if we did that, we had to take kind of the south end of the city lot there to allow them to pull in from Broadway Street, turn into a parking lot now, and then back into their space. Well, it's not great to give up that much parking around for the city, especially in the downtown area. So that's when we came up with the idea, well, let's maybe think about just reconfiguring, using the north end of Broadway Street, reclaiming that as part of the downtown for passenger vehicles and not allowing trucks to go through there. So, with some of those thoughts in mind, we started evaluating what the existing conditions looked like. And in your packet, we included a few photos of some key points that we wanted to make about the existing conditions. As you see right now, on the east side of the road, there's parking up against the building there. And really, those spaces that are there are really not standard spaces. They're short. Any vehicles that park there, in essence, the rear end or the front of the vehicle, which is where they're oriented, face are partway out into the street, into the traveling, which is not a great deal. When you look at the actual configuration of the parking lot itself, the existing city lot, some of the end spaces, for instance, the two end spaces on the far north end, there's really no turning movement space in there. It's hard to get into and out of those spaces when you pull into them. Same thing with the far south end. So really, there's kind of three spaces that are not very effective anyway. And then that lot is relatively deep. And in order to get back to the sidewalk, if you park at the south end, you have to walk through all that length of parking lot. It's just really not a... Oh, it's not unsafe, I don't mean to sound that way, but it's not very aesthetically pleasing. It's not super comfortable. You feel like you're in kind of the middle of the King Milling area. One thing we want to make sure that council is aware of too is that that area that's currently covered by the parking lot is city-owned space, but there's contamination underneath that, so we need to keep it capped in one form or another. So, we couldn't just turn it into green space either. So in looking at all those options, we started looking at how do we reclaim space? I guess one other point to note is that the alley that's behind the McQueen Building, that's actually not a public alley. All those properties go back to the middle of that, what looks like the alley, but it's private. There really is no established public right-of-way back there. Which we're going to have to solve later as an issue because there's sanitary sewer back through there. And we'll have to rebuild it sometime to serve the McQueen Building. But we can address that a little bit later. Part of the Broadway project is to pick up the sanitary sewer there out in front in Broadway Street and route it straight south. So that'll help solve some of that problem. So given all those considerations, we said, okay, let's think outside the box. And if you don't mind looking at the other piece, the other rendering that we came up with of ways that this could be used, we thought, okay, if we can stop the truck turning movements from back there and leave the area just north of the tracks just for truck turning, what are some of our options? And really, this plan that you have, as a conceptual plan, we wanted to make sure things would fit. We have surveyed that whole area, so the space layout isn't just conceptual. It does physically fit. We've laid it out in CAD. The truck turning movements you see on there are using an auto turn movement. And also, King Milling has done some actual measurements of some of their trucks and played with some of the turning radiuses. They thought they probably would not use the two spaces that you see where the front of that truck is, at that far west edge of where their turning movements are. They may or may not want to use those five other spaces. They may want to keep that off for truck turning, just to accommodate some of their, maybe their less experienced drivers, is what they're worried about. So, that aside, moving that parking lot to the front and really sucking it into the whole, the street frontage, our thought was that would provide much more of a visible and potentially aesthetically pleasing and more functional surface lot for people in the business district. So that's kind of the big gist of it. The overall idea is we really don't lose any significant number of spaces with the reconfiguration. It enhances traffic flow quite a bit. I did note on the cover letter we had about the costs for this. So, a lot of the cost in the demolition and some of the pavement restoration, at least in the Broadway quarter, would have been taken care by the utility project anyway. We planned on that as part of the bond proposal. We also, when we set up the bond proposal, put in $60,000 for reconfiguration of the lot if we had wanted it. Again, it's at council's option. So then the only extra cost really that isn't currently financed would be about $32,000 that we thought the DDA might be able to finance for more beautification items. The ornamental fencing, maybe some irrigation, and special landscaping. So, in the grand scheme of that, if the council decides that this makes some sense to move ahead with, the $36,000 and the $60,000, the base cost for that lot are already planned for in the bond. So no additional monies would have to be borrowed or bonded for. Just the extra cost for the beautification. Sorry, that was a quick run-through, but it's actually a pretty straightforward concept. We had talked to King Milling about this as well. A couple of things that this does well, I think, from a truck perspective is, one, it eliminates the truck turning movements onto and from Main Street. So that means that, well, one, that intersection doesn't get us torn up, it doesn't have the truck traffic on it. Two, we don't have trucks coming in from the east and staying right there in the lanes waiting to turn left. Two, you don't have trucks turning out, and especially right by the light there, we already have the light at Hudson. So it stops a lot of major movements occurring very close to a light. We're looking at how King Milling would want to access from the south. And one of the things that they've talked about is they'd like to make Bowes Road maybe a more major intersection for them and really utilize that space. We know that seasonally, they have a ton of trucks that come in only in that summer, early summer harvest. If they come in off from, well, where they do now, just south of Bowes, they hit that dirt road. We've talked to them about using the dirt road that comes in, which they do now, but we'd like to double stack trucks coming in. So there would be two rows of trucks that would be northbound on the dirt road section. They would stay, two rows of trucks, until they hit Bowes. And at that point, they would start going to a single row, so they'd all line up northbound in a single row, which would leave the southbound lane of Broadway open for trucks exiting the King Milling complex. So it really makes all that truck turning movement work pretty well. So from a perspective of King Milling having to, they would not have access here off of Main Street down Broadway, it's not problematic for them. It actually works.
Would the whole plan be contingent on that, down that Bowes Road as well, or would they be separate issues?
No, they'd be separate issues. They're okay with turning. I think there's been some discussion about how much of a major intersection we would make the Bowes and Hudson intersection. But the idea is that they would all exit and enter from the south. So, that was our thought in that, is we thought, let's think out of the box and try to come up with a way to maybe pull that whole parking lot back into the DDA a little bit more, increase the functionality of Main Street and Broadway, make it safer for cars. We also get a lot of people, as you know, that they see people stopped at Hudson at the light. Sometimes they'll try to use Broadway as a cut-through, which isn't great, given all the truck traffic that occurs down there. It's just not good having passenger vehicles blow through that area. Yes, it's a public street, but it's also a very vital industry in the community, too, so we want to facilitate it both as much as possible.
Now, how is King Milling, the office has almost become an island that they're...
Yep.
They're kind of sitting there, as opposed to having easy access now. It's a private business, and they don't get a lot of, you know, public traffic. But this is going to work for them?
Yep. The things that they looked at is they wanted that, the access gates across the alley, that'll help a lot of cut-through traffic, stopping that. We're probably going to take the sidewalk that's right in front of their office building and maybe widen that out to eight feet. There may be a removable boiler that gets put there just so that if they need to, because they have a lot of space in the McQueen Building, and they have an overhead garage door. Sometimes they'll take stuff from there through. But they'll have the option of, again, using the gate at the alley, too. We're really going to try to discourage any wider movement there in front of the office building. But it will help make all that look a little nicer, too.
With the viewing, like you said, so all the utilities there and all that through this process will go underground and clean it up and blah blah blah?
Correct. Actually, Steve can speak to that, too. We're working with low light power right now. A lot of that's going underground. Under the tracks will all be underground, and everything south of the roads is going to be underground.
Yeah, that's correct. Low light power will be undergrounding our entire electric service there down Broadway in conjunction with King Milling. So we have been in discussion with them, and we'll be doing that.
That's awesome. That just makes everything look better and easier and...
There's been great cooperation. As part of the city project, we do have to do boring and jacking underneath the railroad for the sanitary sewer and water main. And as long as we're there, the setup with the boring jack machine, we'll have them boring jacket casing for low light power as well. They're going to pay for, but it saves some extra setup, so it makes it economical for everybody.
I was just wondering, Liz, if you had a chance to take a peek at this, you have no idea what we're talking about?
Yeah, I was just curious, so you're actually closing?
The parades might, yeah, it would create some new thoughts about how the parades would line up. And I see Riverside taking more of an active role, but I think that it would be different.
Have to look at it. No, it's the first I've heard of it.
I can have Mike.
Are employees currently parking facing toward the McQueen Building? Would that be something King Milling can, you know, find more spots for them, since this will become a public lot?
That's hopefully the idea. That's why we set some of those other spots to the south, where they can park in there, or there's some other ways that maybe they can find some space.
I like the trees, I like the whole plan.
Well, and they have a lot more options, of course, now that they have the old Michigan Wire property. They're trying to figure out how best to arrange things there. So that's giving them, again, some more options for employee parking as well.
I really think it helps in the bigger picture, looking at what it does to relieve some of that traffic, especially at Broadway and Main Street. The trucks also coming from the west, turning south, making those big wide turns. And some cars thinking that they can pass on the right, and it's, it would help a great deal.
One other question, will there be lighting? Will it need lighting, Rich, or is that not part of the process there?
We haven't included lighting at this point, but I think there may be a light or two on the lot now. So maybe we could just reconfigure it, but we'll look into that more.
Yeah, and I think that the parking lot does have a couple of electric vehicles plug in, so I'm guessing that's not going to change much.
No, we could relocate the charging stations, that wouldn't be a problem.
It also helps clean up the intersection. Actually, you can see it from here where the, where we have the fire hydrant is over that way. And you can see it's that north, or excuse me, southwest corner. It's kind of a funky arrangement where the fire hydrant's kind of in the way of the sidewalk ramp. I mean, you make the best of the situation you have, right? I don't think anybody did anything wrong there. I think it's just trying to fit what you could fit. And with this, we can reconfigure a little bit of those things and make it a little cleaner through there.
Steve, how much use do those electric charging stations give?
Not much.
Is that a good use of those parking spaces?
It's really the council and board of light power's decision. We can downsize. The idea was, I believe, we got those charging stations free through like a federal program. And we're on this ChargePointAmerica website, so people can actually search for Lowell as a place to charge if they're ever passing through. So that was the idea. I think we have a couple of spaces there and a couple of spaces here on the east side.
I just rarely see cars using those.
I would agree, it's rare.
Maybe we would go to one instead of two, might be an option.
I don't know if I would agree to that. I don't own an electric vehicle, but it's in my plans.
So, I think it's in a lot of people's plans?
Yeah, I agree. It could be in a lot of people's plans, but past usage, there hasn't been much.
Okay.
If the board's interested, or if the council's interested in doing this, what I would like to actually do is I would still also want to approach the Downtown Development Authority to see if they're interested in this. I certainly don't want to force anything on them if they're not interested in it. But I think it would be, I think it would be a good project for the DDA.
We just want to make sure we introduce the concept, because it is a major change. You know, changes the way Main Street functions with the traffic there, changes the traffic on Broadway. Reconfigures that lot, and we want to make sure that makes sense to the council before we had any further discussions with both the DDA and King Milling about that.
Would we need a public hearing for this, to, we're essentially closing the street?
I can find out from the city attorney what we need to do on that.
Mike, are you just looking for consensus?
At this point, if there's interest for us to look.
Oh, I think it's, I think it's great. I think it'll clean up the city. I think, you know, deposit us with underground, and, you know, I think it'd be worth looking into.
I agree.
And I would say, if we've got time, a public hearing is sometimes a good thing to do, whether you made it or not.
And we wouldn't be proposing to vacate the street right now. I know there's some talk about that as well, that King Milling had looked at, what if you vacate? But I think, right now, it doesn't make sense to go through that. There's still a lot of utility corridor through there, so that's something else to think about. We do have, it's actually an interesting, very interesting situation. In all my years of engineering, I've never run across this before with the railroad. That old, that section of Broadway Street was platted before the railroad came through. Which means that normally, in normal cases, railroads come through and then they own that strip of property that the railroad covers. And that's the case on what was Old Water Street to the east there, too. But in the case of Broadway, the plaque was there prior to the railroad. So, really, the city owns that land on which the tracks lie for that 66-foot width, which is very interesting. It means we're going to, as a courtesy, offer them the railroad review of the utility plans, but we aren't required to pay the permitting fees and deal with the six-to-nine month timeframe, so which is kind of nice. Sorry, I'll look to the engineering.
Would we consider moving forward with that?
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Item number B, Resolution 1917, for a voting system.
Okay, this is in regards to our new voting system. And city council approval is necessary for the city to be able to apply to the Secretary of State for a grant to purchase the new voting system from Dominion Voting, which includes precinct tabulators, absentee voter county board tabulators, accessible voting devices for use by individuals with disabilities, and related election management software. Full funding for the new voting system will be provided by the state and will include a combination of Federal Help America Vote Act and state appropriated funds.
I recommend that the city council approve Resolution 1917 and authorize City Clerk Susan Hollery to submit this grant application on behalf of the city of Lowell.
So moved. Support. Discussion, Sue.
Mayor DeGore.
Yes.
Councilmember Hedges.
Yes.
Councilmember Phillips.
Yes.
Councilmember Telemann.
Yes.
And Councilmember Canfield.
Yes.
Item C is the Riverwalk Festival's closure request.
The Lowell Area Chamber of Commerce has requested to close Avery Street west of Monroe Street beginning on Thursday, July 6th, at 6:00 a.m. for Saturday, July 8th, 2017, ending at 9:00 p.m. for the purpose of food concessions. And to close Avery Street east of Monroe to Jefferson Street, and Washington Street north of Main to the Lowell Area Schools parking lot, Saturday, July 8th, beginning at 6:00 a.m. to 4:00 p.m. for the Riverwalk Cruisin'. My understanding is these are the same street closures we've done in the past for this event. And I'm recommending that the Lowell City Council approve the closure.
So moved. One second. Sue.
Councilmember Hedges.
Yes.
Councilmember Phillips.
Yes.
Councilmember Telemann.
Yes.
Councilmember Canfield.
Yes.
And Mayor DeGore.
Yes.
Item D, Preferred Vendor Policy.
During the audit review of 2016, there was a review of procurement procedures. The auditors noticed an instance where the purchasing policy bid requirements were not followed for repurchase that exceeded the bid threshold of $5,000. An explanation was provided by management that the purchase was from a preferred vendor. Please see the attached purchasing policy, item I, which will allow, in certain instances, the city to purchase from preferred vendors.
It should be noted that this is pretty much the same policy that's in place for low light power. We've pretty much taken on the same policy for this.
I would recommend it.
Consistency is good, and I do think that there are very, some applications to where this makes a great deal of sense. I'd make the motion that we revise the purchasing policy, adding section I that allows provision for preferred vendors.
I'll second. Any discussion further? Sue.
Councilmember Phillips.
Yes.
Councilmember Telemann.
Yes.
Councilmember Canfield.
Yes.
Mayor DeGore.
Yes.
Councilmember Hedges.
Yes.
Item Six is Boarding for the...
Okay, first, I'd like to say that the Historic District Commission, I absolutely love those guys. They do a wonderful job, and they truly love the community and the city. Little update, 214 East Main has window replacements on the second floor. 103 East Main painting. 198, 212 West Main painting for the condos, and 301 West Main painting. And then updates, we have 318 East Main windows. 120 West Main exterior renovations. And the next meeting will be July 18th instead of the 26th, at 6 o'clock downstairs. It's July 18th. That's all I have.
It was a quiet, quiet end of the month, so nothing to mention.
I was unable to attend the Parks and Rec meeting, but I do know they reviewed Chapter 8 of the 2017 Rec Plan and prioritized improvements part by part.
I had no meetings, and I'm practically living in Cadillac right now, so I need somebody to attend the Light and Power meeting for me next Wednesday. I have lots of appointments for my 88-year-old aunt who fell. So, if somebody would be willing at some point, just let me know. Thank you.
Yeah, we'll figure it out.
I've had no meetings, but the planning commission for this month has been canceled. Move on to the managers.
Couple of things. First and foremost, I want to thank Impact Church for their participation for Love Week this week. They did a number of projects throughout the city on city grounds. Obviously, the new place they gave over at Stony Lakeside Park is up and operational. And I had an opportunity to tour all of the projects last week, and I was very pleased with the work that they did. I also want to thank Bob Rogers for his leading the efforts for that. So once again, thank you. I know city staff's getting ready for a Riverwalk. I know Liz is as well. And I'm looking forward to attending my first Riverwalk this weekend. Two weeks ago, we had the new phone system installed in City Hall and all the city facilities. Still working out a couple of little minor things, but all in all, the system's working out pretty well. I haven't heard any complaints about it. It's so much better than the system we had in the past. And I think it was a good investment for the city. On Monday, August 7th, yeah, Monday, August 7th, we'll have a committee of the whole meeting before the city council meeting at 5:30. We will be discussing the topic of medical marijuana. At a recent council meeting, there was an interested group about establishing a dispensary in the city or a care facility within the city. And we're going to give them the opportunity to make a presentation. I'm also going to have a representative from the Kent County Prosecutor's Office going to be making an equal amount of time presentation, basically conveying their side of the matter and conveying information to the council. And hopefully, the council has the information to make whatever decision they so choose. In regards to Chief Bucula, his current, his case is proceeding through the Alleghen County Corps. The case got moved out of Kent County to Alka County, basically for conflict of interest reasons. I'm going to refrain any disciplinary action until after the court case. I don't want any disciplinary action to have an effect on his court case. And that's all I have.
Thank you. Move to appointments. I have contacted the people from the last two spots on the Officers' Compensation Commission and the Art Award. They would both like to continue with another term if there are no objections to that. Then, council comments. Jeffrey.
First and foremost, I'd like to thank all employees, staff, and departments for a wonderful job you do. Truly, our city's in good shape. Secondly, I think it was June 23rd when we got that email from the Lowell Amateur Radio Club. I went down there, and I didn't even realize the other half of Stony Lake Park. It's absolutely gorgeous over there by the Riverwalk. Just a great group of guys that put an antenna up and they communicated to all 50 states. And they have a passion for it. And I got information, and I'm going to give it to Mike and Susie. I think if anything were to ever happen in this community, we could get ahold of them and we could be able to communicate with anybody, anywhere. And I think it's going to be a vital source to us. Hopefully, we'll never need it, but if we do, we have those people here. And they were standing back when the tornado hit Portland. They went down there and they were able to, you know, erect it and be able to communicate. So I think that's a great asset that we have in this community, and a great group of guys. So I fully support them, and enjoy the great weather.
Thank you.
That's a similarly great job to Impact Church, Bob Rogers, and everybody. We've got a lot of different groups that step up and make things happen around here. That was a lot of love last week, so thanks to all of their efforts, and looking forward to Riverwalk this weekend, and onto boat rides, and fireworks, and concerts, and food, and, ah, just the craziness of it all, it's good. Liz, thanks for all that you do.
Thank you. Mr. Campio?
Just a couple of things, thanks to Impact, it's really amazing the amount of work they got done and polished up a couple of dull spots in town that needed it. It's real impressive and great that they do that. I happened to run into Jeff, and he told me about the amateur radio guys, so I went down there the next morning and met them. It's interesting, they have a 100-foot tower they set up, and generators can do that, and anytime there's an emergency, they're available to help with it. It was real interesting to do that, so thanks for pointing that out, Jeff. Again, encourage everybody to enjoy Riverwalk, it's one of the highlights of our town this summer. Should be great weather, hopefully.
Thank you.
And my uncle was a part of that radio club, and he was very proud to be a member of it, and they do a lot of great things. Lowell, everything that we've talked about tonight, and how good Lowell is, and their workers are so engaged, and we all can be very, very proud and honored to have such a fine community of not only workers, but great citizens, too.
I don't mean to say that Riverwalk's my favorite time of year, so I hope to see everybody down there. And I saw the Impact people around, and they're working hard. So, that's all I have. Move to item 10.
That, Mr. Mayor, I thought that we should go on to closed session to discuss labor negotiations at 7:32.
I'll second.
Sue.
Councilmember T. Landers?
Yes.
Councilmember Campio?
Yes.
Mayor DeLoren?
Yes.
Councilmember Hedges?
Yes.
Councilmember Phillips?
Yes.